You gonna say it?
No, I didn't.
Too many way of the council too.
You don't need her for the first five minutes.
Alright, everybody, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. If we can start with a moment of silence, please. We can start with a moment of silence, please. If we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is that I am a Christian. And to the power of the court, which is saying I just want a nation under God, in the name of the Lord. With liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder, if you happen to have a cellphone on you, please turn it off and turn it on silent. City Clerk Domingo, he'll take your call for us, please.
Councilmember William.
Present.
Reed, Jackson.
Here.
Waller.
Davis.
Present.
Bryan.
Here.
And Mayor Franklin.
Here.
I would like to make a motion to approve of the agenda with a couple of changes. I would like to ask that we remove item C from the agenda.
Did the time stream anything?
No, sir.
Have a seat, Fred.
You got over?
No.
Not yet.
It hasn't started.
Alright.
And I would like to ask that the Charles Holmes letter get taken out of the consent calendar items and moved to item N for discussions.
Some will.
Support.
Call of favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Alright, we will start off this evening with a welcome presentation from Dr. Wayne Webster, our new president of Albion College. He was asked to come in today to give us some information about himself in the hopes for the college under his tenure.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for having me join you. Luckily, I think I've had a chance to meet with many of you or see many of you at different events here in the community. But my name is Wayne Webster. I just moved here to be the president of the college, starting on July 1. Live over in the president's house on Michigan Avenue. I'm joined by my wife Sally, my daughter Stella, who's 10. She's gonna be in fifth grade. And we're excited to be part of this community, excited to be part of Albion. And I've been downtown at various things, the farmer's market and some of the shops downtown. And we're looking forward to being an active part of what's happening, obviously, on Superior, but what other things happen in the community. I was just over at the, at the height, excuse me, the elementary school with some of our football players who are welcoming students back for the year and giving them packets and getting them excited for what's happening. So I was excited to see our students involved in the community in various ways. And certainly, I'll do everything I can to continue to encourage that involvement and encourage that support for the community, because we obviously enjoy supporting the community as well. So certainly, we encourage you to come to campus for games and musical events and theater events and to be an active part of what we're doing and look forward to being in town to support what's happening here as well. So I'll leave it down unless there's any questions, if that's appropriate.
Yep. Do we have any questions for Dr. Webster? Councilmember Moly.
Thank you so much. It's finally nice to meet you. I'm glad to see that you came out. I appreciate you doing that. I am Marco, I'm the council member for fourth precinct, which some of the college is in my precinct. And I hope that we could one day soon have discussion about the way Bigwell looks when parents drop their freshmen off. So I'm looking forward to have great conversation with you about possibly just asking you right now, though, to take a look at the street and see all that you make and have a conversation with our city manager about. I speak about this all the time, and I know people are probably tired of it, but I speak about Bigwell Street as much as I can, because it is a concern to us and that and the people that are on that street about it being a sore eye. And it's just so bumpy, nothing just wear and tear on the street. But hopefully, we can partner and collaborate and try to figure out something that we can do. I'm sure our city manager will love to talk about it.
Right, I'm happy to look at it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Webster? Well, Dr. Webster, we welcome you to Albion. We know that you're hopefully will do great things for our college community and know that we will be here to support you in any way that we can.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, public comment. So at this time, we can open this up to public comments, but it does have to be in regards to an agenda item that we have on our agenda. So if you can, you have something to speak on the agenda, feel free to come up, give us your name, your address, and three minutes of yours.
Yeah. My name is Fred Rasty. I live at 912 North Eaton, across from the Robathon Law Firm. And I'm not exactly sure which item I'm referring to because of the paper the other day. However, I just wanted to say something about in my three minutes. I sometimes practice law. And I believe in majority rule and minority rights.
Mr. Risky?
Rasty.
Risky?
Rasty.
Rasty.
So I don't think that is an agenda item. I don't think.
Well, you can.
No, no, I know. Is it, if it was about the newspaper article, that is not an agenda item. So we do have another public comment at the end of our agenda that you are more than willing to come up and speak to council about. But at this time, it's only in regards to agenda item specific. So yes, if you would take that.
Is reconsideration an agenda item?
No, no, but you can definitely, yeah, come up at the end. Is there anybody else who'd like to stand and address counsel in regards to an agenda item? Alright, seeing none, we will go ahead to the consent calendar.
Close session.
We're going into a close session?
Yeah, close session.
Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn to close session?
Some will.
Support. City Clerk Domingo, if you'll take your call for us, please.
Councilmember Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
And Mayor Franklin.
Yes. Meeting adjourned, 7:10 PM for closed session. Back, and it is 7:26 PM. City Clerk Domingo, do you take your call for us, please?
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah.
Jackson.
Here.
Waller.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Bryan.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
And Mayor Franklin.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve of the consent calendar items?
Some will. Support.
And that we have our August 7th study session, our August 7th regular session, or August 15th special meeting. We have the application to close West Pine Street for Salem United Church. And to approve of the leisure hour. So we have motion and support. Any questions or comments? City Clerk Domingo?
That can be a voice.
Okay. Call of favor, say aye.
Aye.
May I pose? Alright, next, do I have a motion to approve of the application for Juanita Solis Care to the Arts Commission?
So. We ready to go, it's okay.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
And Mayor Franklin.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 202317 to approve the purchase of 312 Fifth Street?
Some will.
Support. City Manager, say it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is before you, as councils aware, we've received a Michnamak grant to build a modular home. We received two queen reports, environmental reports for 310 and 312. So we are looking to move forward with purchasing through 12 to utilize that lot to build the modular home. Our, the attorney's office has reviewed the purchase agreement. We're looking to purchase that the fair market value is 2,200. And we have agreed to split the closing cost, I believe, would be an additional 400 for the city. So we are recommending approval.
Any questions for City Manager this later?
I have a question. This is 312, the one that Mr. wants?
No, this is the one next to that.
Councilmember Williams, if you have something?
I just have an issue with the verbiage in this purpose and findings, but I don't think it's enough to worry about. Therefore, it's listed as affordable housing. These homes will be sold north of 200,000. It's not affordable down here in the city area. But that's not what is based off of, so if it being in there, it shouldn't be a problem.
Any other questions or comments? City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Reed.
No.
Jackson.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And Mayor Speaker.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve a resolution 202319, a resolution to set the alternative meeting dates for July and December for the Board of Review meetings?
Some will. Support.
City Manager, say it.
Yes, so thank you. So the Board of Review meets in July and December on the Tuesday following the third and Monday. For, with the assessor to review any requests that they have from property owners. With our new assessor on board, he recommended that we approve alternate dates, just in case weather. We have a member of the Board of Review who can't come, they can still hold a meeting within that month. So this will just add another date in July and December to board if we ever have an issue.
Do we have questions or comments in regards to this topic? Councilmember Bryan?
Yeah, so just the resolution has blank days and dates in 2023 and times. So we're approving the ability to set those dates, not to set the dates, correct?
No, that's just, their format's different. So that's for Jill to fill in. They're looking to add, it would be the third Monday in July and the second Monday in December are their alternate dates.
Yeah, and I, I think that's good, because I was on the Board of Review and when there was inclement weather, we had to try to, nothing was in place. So we had to try to hold everybody and so, but if something is in place, that will make it run smoother. hold everybody and so, but if something is in place, that will make it run smoother. So I'm in favor of that.
Yep, Tony Harkness.
The only other thing I would add, too, it's a good idea to have those ultimate meeting dates because since the state made the changes to the Open Meetings Act, remote, uh, remoting in unless you're on military service isn't allowed anymore, whether it's by Zoom or by phone. So everything's got to be in person.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? City Clerk, coming up?
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty three twenty for the USDA loan resolution for Senate Harry Sue Sewer System project.
So. Support.
With manager, straighter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so as stated in the study session, we are at the point where we can close on the loans to move forward with the eighteen million dollar project with the wastewater treatment plant. So included are three different resolutions noting that, um, makeup of those loans. So this resolution is for the first loan of one million one hundred forty six thousand. We are recommending, um, approval.
Questions or comments for City Manager, straighter? City Clerk, can we go?
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty three twenty one to the USDA loan resolution.
Some more.
Support.
City Manager, straighter?
Yes, thank you. So this is the second loan, um, for the amount of eight million dollars. We are recommending approval.
Questions or comments on this item? City Clerk, can we go?
Councilmember French.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Motion to approve the consumer easement for West Michigan.
For long.
G.
One more.
Got to go to G.
U S.
You missed a lot. Hey, sixty.
Oh.
We got the U S.
Yep. Motion to approve the Resolution twenty twenty three twenty two for the USDA loan resolution.
Some more support.
He may just say, final loan for eight million eight hundred fifty four thousand dollars. Questions or comments? Lady Clerk, can we go?
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes, I apologize. My little sticky notes get a little too sticky. Right now we're on to need a motion to approve the consumer easement for West Michigan Street and North Albion Street.
Some more support.
City Manager, straighter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So council, you may remember, um, back earlier this year, we bought board easements that, um, were required for the North Albion Street Bridge project. Um, those were approved both by the city council and then another easement was required by the A D A. Um, so we're getting ready to start that project and we were on site. It was, um, we determined that they relocated the high voltage lines. However, they did not relocate the low voltage lines where we need both lines to be relocated to move forward with the project. Um, so we have consumers has prepared in another easement so that they can move forward with relocating those. Um, our city attorney has reviewed the easement and we are recommending approval so we can get this going. Yes.
Ultimately.
You said this was because of the bridge project?
Yes, so they, yes, they need to relocate some of the utility, utility poles.
No, I got you.
Update on that. That project, um, started today. They closed the bridge last week, so it will be closed until July of next year, but they are moving forward and they will completely, um, demolish the structure and then it will be closed until next construction season where we will see all of the work go.
Any questions? Any other questions or comments? City Clerk, can we go?
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the Whitman proposal for preventative maintenance on seven bridges?
So more support.
City Manager, straighter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the city of Albany, we were awarded a, um, local bridge grant for, um, M dot local bridge grant in the amount of a little over five hundred fifty thousand dollars for preventative maintenance work on seven of our, um, bridge structures. Um, so we have, um, been provided a proposal from Whitman to kind of kick off that project. The scope of work is included in the proposal. Um, it is for fifty four thousand six hundred. Sam Leach is here from Whitman. He is kind of the project engineer who we've been working with. Um, it's kind of the lead on the North Albion Street Bridge project, but getting this proposal approved, it will allow him to kind of kick off that project. Um, it will not take place though until twenty twenty five. There's a lot that needs to be done leading up to that. So we are just recommending approval so we can get, get started with that process.
Do we have any questions for either City Manager, straighter, or Mr. Leach who is in a tip? And I.
And Rose. This year for now, it's three could start today. I would look that you're in nine of here. Um, and these are inside structure. All the other, oh, for a local. The city home. So all averages will have it included. And for you to.
Nope, nope. Any questions or comments? Yeah.
So does that include the two bridges on East Erie Street?
Yes.
So when is the southern, easternmost one being addressed?
We haven't done the design yet.
Okay.
Okay. City manager, which that is a, uh, a structural current. And we will be filling those as well as, uh, Hannah Bridges so that any moments in between the two structures. And I say not so elevated more than others like old access to resonate.
So the follow up is that this, that easternmost bridge covers the, um, the dammed bypass that we're thinking about removing the dam. So there might be an opportunity to remove the bridge as well. So we should make sure that those sort of the dam installation project that we're talking about is in conjunction with those efforts. So we're not rebuilding a bridge that we're just going to take down again and we're closing off that, that causeway.
Any other questions or comment? City Clerk, can we go?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. Next is our discussion for the E D C budget.
Slash of.
So you have the financial reports in your ticket. And Councilman Williams had asked this to be brought to the agenda, so. Don't worry.
So, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so all in all, I'll make this short. Um, what authority do we have over the resources we provide to the E D C? The financial resources that we provide to E D C. What own authority do we have over?
Or.
I mean, in terms of what we provide, I mean, we do the budget, but state law, um, says something to the effect of that any municipality can basically contribute money in furtherance of the corporation's goals or something to that effect, um. Any municipality and any agency department thereof, or any public of, public body may do any of the following. Um, anything necessary convenient to aid in the planning and execution of project plan, lend, grant, transfer, contribute funds to the corporation furtherance of its public purposes. So, I mean, basically, if, if the city could lend money to the E C, E D C, they could grant it, they could transfer it, or they could just give the money E D's, sorry, give the E D C money.
Or we could not give the E D C one.
Correct. I mean, you don't have to give them money, but this, there's a, there's a state statute that says you can give the E D C. No, I just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you.
Yes, so there's, their budget is a subsection of the city's budget, so it goes to their board first. They approve it and then it comes to council for final approval with all of the other funds. So council, you have the right to make changes or whatever, um, from what is proposed. I know, uh, we do issue, they pay a small administrative fee. Um, we handle all like administrative services for the E D C in terms of like bookkeeping, we process their accounts payable, their payroll. Um, we administer their benefits, um, retirement, um, for small fee that was set up, I think, back when it was created and it's just been adjusted in terms of cost of living, so.
Okay. All right.
Mayor for Tim Jackson.
So, um, that was, I was, that was like a lead in for me. It said board first and then they, it brings the council. So who is over, um, who is basically over? I do believe I know, but I want to hear it. Um, that tells the CEO what they can spend, what they cannot spend, who looks over all of that paper of that individual?
Um, it should go, it goes before their board.
The board first.
I'm pretty sure, um, in terms of like the whatever is approved in there, what's been approved in their budget, that's what she is or he or she they're allowed to spend. Um, they do fall under the same requirements for use of public funds that since they are a subsection of the city, we handle their bookkeeping. It's essentially part of our audit. Um, they're required to follow the same requirements on expenses that, that we do.
Okay, so, um, well, Phil is not the lawyer. They're waiting to ask a question. So any procedures that whoever was granted the CEO position, they make sure that they have guidelines right before them when they sign their contracts and all that.
Yeah, so it's spelled out in the bylaws or the, um, that have been approved by, it's essentially approved by council that kind of outlines what their E D C's authority. If they do not have formal policies in place that the board has approved, then they fall under the city's policy. So they are held to the same policies that we have here, the same requirements and um, things like that.
So I just hope that, uh, however we go forward, that whoever, um, make sure that they understand all that stuff before they get to spending dollars and cents and how they go forward of talking to individuals on the outside. Because like I, I mentioned early today, you do have many individuals at board that is very concerned to make sure that we're able to go forward and being able to take that overflow. That's been conversations all weekend. Uh, that, you know, Marshall will have such a big amount of this business, but they want to see that this overflow comes into Albion. But they want to make sure that we are able to come together and make sure that these happen. So, you know, all these ups and downs that we've been having, I was hoping that we stop and we can all work together to, to go further. I mean, to go, you know, further and help the, uh, city to be developed. So, thank you.
Quick question. So since we're on topic of the E D C, um, staff. Um, much like the system we have here, where we're not allowed to staff, talk to staff, well, instruct staff, do they operate under the same, um, the same principle? Like, are they governed the same way where the board members aren't allowed to directly, um, instruct staff?
Attorney Harkness.
I mean, what I can offer is the, the, that separation of legislative and executive function for the city is spelled out in our charter. The E D C doesn't, just has their articles of incorporation and their bylaws. So it depends on what's set forth there. I mean, realistically, their legislative body shouldn't be directing anyone except for their direct report. The, the, their direct report would then direct their subordinate. So it's a similar situation to like the city manager. You guys set out, uh, goals and objectives for the city manager and she directs those persons under her to carry out and execute those things. So similarly with the E D C, their board sets those out for their director and then whatever employees are under their director use, you know, sets, you know, gives her, her, his or her employees tasks to execute to accomplish. But, but to my knowledge, I don't think there, I'd have to look at their articles of appropriation, but I don't think they have the exact same languages as our charter. As our charter is very specific on that point.
Okay, thank you.
So could we find that language, you know, can you point me to get the language that you're saying that they should have? Wait, the E D C, the language.
That they, that they should have in there?
Right, correct. How they report that.
I can, I can give council a sample of what our, well, I can tell you what our charter says and then.
Yeah, I can understand that, but I wanted to know where we could find their information. So I'll dig a little deeper. I'll ask them. I'll find.
Councilman French?
I withdraw.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Their bylaws are listed on the website, the city's website. You can find what.
Okay.
them up and see what they're allowed to do and.
Okay.
And not do. But if it's, it spells out if they do not have formal, if their board has not approved or adopted formal policies, then they fall under the cities.
Okay, thank you.
Right, next is our discussion on the third party investigation.
Um, I brought this to, um, to counsel to kind of get a gist of what was going on with the letters that was going back and forth. I know Haley can't help me out.
Hold on.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Drop the next one.
Oh, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I brought this up. Um, now this is a discussion and approve. Um, so discussion and approved investigation by a third party into the termination of the A E D C CEO and president. Um, we all know the issues that we've had here in the, um, city over the last few weeks and none of us have a clue as to why, um, the decisions were made to remove the CEO and president of the E D C over the past few weeks. So I would like to see a third party investigation. Um, I don't think there's much more conversation you need from me, but if you all would like to discuss or have questions, then we can discuss further.
Councilman French?
So, um, I don't oppose that, but, uh, make the statement then. It's not quite accurate. I received from Virgie the letter that was sent to her by the former chair of the board. And there was a paragraph in there that outlined the rationale that was given to her for her termination. Now, whether or not that's legitimate or not, I can't say, which is why I think I would be okay with us doing an investigation, but, but for us to think that we don't have any idea, I think the question is more of, is it in our opinion, whether such opinion counts or not is another question, but in our opinion, is that sufficient cause for termination? So I, I think that, you know, I don't, I wouldn't oppose bringing somebody else in.
Thank you so much. Um, I, I'm, I would really like to know how late was it that she got this letter? But she did stand here and say she did. She was glad that, um, the thought that came up about an investigation because she didn't even know why she was fired. So I was just wondering if she, she may or may not have gotten that email or letter um, before or after she made a comment. None, none of us probably know, so that's probably why he said, none of us know, because she said she didn't.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, uh, no, I can speak to why I said, none of us know. Um, sorry, I shouldn't have spoke for you all. Um, the board members that I've spoken to all said that they weren't aware of and did not know why she was terminated still to this day. Um, in the meeting that we had last week on Tuesday, it was said that they also didn't know why they were terminated as why, um, she was terminated as well. Um, but again, um, I believe this is worth looking into, um, to ensure that everything was above board. Um, and I'd like to see what the outcome is.
Okay, Attorney Harkness, can you advise on how to proceed? I guess who would we contact? And since four of the board members have been removed from the board, do you see any issues with doing an investigation after the fact?
There's a lot of questions in that. So number one, if you're going to authorize an investigation from a budgetary standpoint, my recommendation would be that you put a cap on it. Um, as much as I love being an attorney, I will say that, um, many attorneys, particularly in terms that do this type of work, love to bill. And so it is. Love to bill and so it is in the city's best interest to put a cap on what kind of expenditure they're going to make. The last time the city did one of these, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, they put about a ten thousand dollar cap on it. Um in terms of someone who could do something like this. Um the attorney that did the last one for the city um works for. I believe it's pronounced Truen Law out of Lansing. Um uh his name, I want to say Timothy Gardner. Was the one that did the last one, um my understanding is he did a very thorough job, um. As far as um potential issues, you know. The one poti- potential issue I think that the city is likely to run into is now that the board members have been removed. They were voluntary board members, um this is not, there's not a pending birth case or anything, so. They can't be compelled to participate in an investigation. The city can certainly ask them to participate. But they can't be compelled to participate and in fact. They may refuse to participate because if there's an allegation that they violated the Open Meetings Act, that has potential civil and criminal penalties. They would have a Fifth Amendment right not to incriminate themselves if. Such something along those lines existed, so. Certainly, the city can do an investigation, but like I said, A, I would cap it, B. Um there's, there's one name that I've thrown out, I can certainly find some other names if the city wants some options. Um but in terms of issues, I think you're going to have an issue with. Getting the people who have the information that the city is likely interested in getting them to cooperate at this point.
Yes, I'm just wondering that the relevancy of that when today. Uh the E D C boards uh reelected officers as well as appointed. Uh Ms. Ammerman uh as the interim uh director with. Directions to work with her on an agreement. So, I mean, she's back on the job, someone else is working with her. Uh the executive board, the original executive board is no longer there. And a new board has been hired to negotiate with her. So do we want to get ahead of what they're doing? Are are we going to go over, you know, over their heads and and have an investigation anyway?
Yeah, thank you, um. Being that they're overseeing or have overseen funds that we've given them in the past and that they currently still have. We need to make and ensure that no systemic issues will be taking place and. For the thank it being the dignity of the E D C and the E D C board, we need to verify that if anything did take place, that it comes to the law.
Mayor Tim Jackson?
I would agree with that. I mean, I'm still understanding that there's other stuff going on down there. I don't know that address, I shouldn't know it. It used to be my address, but anyway, um. Then maybe some of you guys don't know, but I would agree that we need to go ahead with the third party. Investigation.
Thank you so much. I'd like to call a question. I just need five votes. In a second.
Second.
Betty Quick Domingo.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Mayor Stinger.
Yes.
Betty Quick Domingo on the vote. Great, so that was we did.
Yeah, I know, I guess my my thing I would point out to council is councils. Hasn't put any parameters on on this and that could be problematic because A. You haven't selected anybody, B, I don't think you's, I would rec, I would strongly recommend setting a budget. And if you, and I mean, if you, if you want me to come back with multiple names, I'm happy to do that. If you guys don't want to use Tim Gardner, if Tim is even willing to do it. Um but I I really think you should put some parameters on this before you vote to approve it, otherwise it's just an open ended thing.
Well, currently, we don't know what the expense will be, um. I would suggest that we do it like we do much with the bids, um we call and survey and see how much the pricing would be to look into this. Um. Now, we won't have those numbers today, so I don't think we need it in the vote, but um. What was the other purchase outside of the money? Oh, the law firm, um we still have to figure out a law firm because we don't currently have one. So the vote today will just be saying that we are pursuing this going forward. And I would imagine that we would have to have another vote once we find the law firm and then another and and a vote for the pay as well.
If I might revise that a little bit. I would make the motion read something like this, that we as a council. Instruct the city manager and the city attorney to um find. Or go through a bid process to identify a law firm who's willing to spend no more than. Ten thousand dollars for the investigation of what's going on. Oh, what was the language, um uh to uh to investigate uh the termination of the A E D C C E O president? That way we are, we're we're voting to do something, which is to assign the city manager and the city attorney the task of finding us. Attorneys plural that we can then approve of uh at a later vote.
I think procedurally here, we're, we've kind of got a stickity wicket because you voted to. All the question, and so I think realistically, you can only mo- vote. On the pending motion.
But what was the?
But you can add um.
Well.
Amendment, yes, you can.
If you're gonna do a friendly amendment, yeah.
Is that considered a friendly amendment?
Send the original motion.
Okay, so.
I think it's, I think it's fair. I'm I'm on board with that.
So it's a friendly amendment, then we can proceed, correct?
But I do say amended.
Yeah, as amended.
Yeah. No, but we'll figure out who we can go once they come back.
So what's on the table, Ms. Mayor?
What's on the table?
So we are voting to have a third party investigation with the parameters that it's capped at ten thousand dollars. And we are going to open up a search like our. To get bids um for attorneys or.
Yeah, I don't know, do you want an attorney or do you want an investigator? I mean, there's, there's, I I this is probably something we can discuss at a future meeting, but. There's a couple, there's a few question marks still, but and I think you're on the right track.
I can put that gap. Discussion still, uh just like to ask uh Madam.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We're just making a friendly amendment to the initial motion.
To the initial motion?
No, we have a friendly amendment to the initial motion.
Right.
So now we have to vote.
We have to vote.
Because the question is called.
Would you read from the amendment?
Can you re-read? Counselwoman Reed, basically, with the the vote is, is to authorize uh. Basically, the the manager and I to put together a request for proposal for an investigation as described by counsel with a. Maximum expenditure of ten thousand dollars.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
No.
French.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And there's.
No.
Discussion of the West Ward. And this was brought forth by.
So um I brought this um just to counsel to get some more further um information. About why this didn't go through. It's the. Yeah, this is dealing with the West Ward property, so yeah, I let. If you could help, help me with, may help me understand this.
By what did not go through?
The grant. I know that, okay, first of all, I know that when individuals come in and they want to get um. Want to get the property so that they can um build on it, we usually help some way somehow. To help with, you know, with all the different um. To all the different, I said, I'm gonna say investigation, but helping with uh testing. The the land and all that so that that can help the payment and everything go down, so what happened with this?
Yes, so Director Arnold Cleveland, if you'd like to join in case, feel free to jump in on whatever I miss, so this has um. Been in the works for, I want to say, pre pandemic. Um the former E D C C E O um was working with a potential developer to bring. And housing development to the West Ward um property formerly known as the urban renewal area here in town. Um testing was done, has been completed, phase one and phase two. But that we um through those testings have found the level of contamination in that area. Um with the new, we started working um on Amy's departure and then when. Uh Ms. Ammerman joined us, we were working to develop a, was it a purchase agreement or a development agreement? Um between the city and the potential developer, developer, um. In the meantime, we enrolled into a brownfield boot camp, which was a a grant program that would help address. Um contamination on brownfield sites and it was kind of a joint um effort between the city and the E D C. Um with Ms. Ammerman taking the lead as um since she is oversees the brownfield authority. Um she would be responsible for engaging with the community, actually coming, preparing the grant agreement. Um where our our finance office would be responsible for the finance aspect of it. Um and then our other support staff, uh Director Arnold's department to to just assist the E D C at that. Um Colin did prepare uh. What was, it's not a purchase agreement, what was the title?
First, we had a development agreement.
Yes, that was provided to um the E D C, that was not what they wanted to see at the time. So they asked, they requested an option to purchase an agreement, which Attorney Harkness prepared and provided that to them. And it sounds like um Ms. Ammerman had meetings with the potential developer in S M E, who has done all of the environmental. Um through that, they, the developer is required to prepare a due care plan. Um but in taking ownership of the property, they have to pr- present this, prepare this plan. Um it would be required for, if they're looking to get assistance from the state and through Eagle, they would need this. Um I received an email from Ms. Ammerman, um just letting. I think a few council members were on, since there was, it looks like at this time, that requirement, the developer was not interested in moving forward. Um so we did receive an email from Ms. Ammerman saying that the grant um would not be moving forward since there was no longer a developer. On that site. Um and so that is where we're at. I know the city, we are showing that we are. Taking appropriate steps to show of due care um by one, having the testing done. Um and then also that came um. Percy with the land bank, she came and they presented on what levels have been completed, that was here at a a city council meeting. Similar to the Dalrymple site, we have posted um signs around the property to just inform residents that there is. Some level of contamination to not disturb the um the ground, so it's uh. Different ways to show our efforts that we are um taking the necessary steps or do care to. To come up with a solution to um address the site. Um so I did send a response to everybody who was included on that email, letting them know what we would be doing to. To inform our community.
Were the, were the people around there notified of what, I I got a call. About ten o'clock at night saying, why are these signs up around here? And I told him, I said, I really don't know because I didn't know anything about, I hadn't been that way for a while. To know that signs have been put up and that that land was contaminated. And so uh I told them I will find out. I did try calling your office, but you were, no nobody answered. I think I did talk to Ian about it. Uh but could letters go out to the people who live right around there where those signs are being put out as to what's wrong? And what's being done?
Yeah, and I I would take it a step further, so I've talked with Director Arnold and I think we just jumped the gun when I reached out to our D P W to see if we had remaining s- signs. They just went for it and and placed them around the site.
Yes.
Um so I've talked to Director Arnold, I think it would be best if we held a town hall or some type of meeting and had. A communication specialist come in to share, really share what that information is. I know we've. Received the info from um and what those environmental reports, but making sure that they understand what is um. What level of contamination is within that property, I think that would be our best. Um our best course of action to make sure that our community, community is made aware.
If I can interject, just add one thing, the phase two results on the West Ward, it's a canvas, it's about ten acres that we're talking about. Um that is somewhere north of twenty eight soil borings that were taken. And so the results we have of that aren't a clean cut, here's exactly what's wrong, it's about three hundred and sixty pages. And you don't want us uh interpreting that for the residents, we want engineers interpreting their document for the residents, so we we're just trying to be a little careful with. Our communication about it and we're working with the land bank and their engineer who. Uh completed that uh assessment to make sure that we're communicating the essential information.
Counselwoman Lee.
Yes, thank you, um, okay, so. I see where um where the conflict seems to be the due care plan. And um having that in place in order to be able to get the funding, um. The, the due care plan. As part of the brownfield boot camp, you did, did you both take the the boot camp? Okay, all right, okay, so. Can you get the grant without the due care plan?
I think the grant will help if you have a developer interested in the site. Um there are probably other sources of grants uh out there that they can apply. I know when uh Mr. Perez was here, she was looking at applying for an E P A grant. To kind of a address the level of contamination, but any developer will need to prepare their own um due care plan. So it does not transfer, so whatever we're doing here at the city level would not transfer with the sale of that property, they would still be responsible for. Um coming up with their own course of action to address the levels of contamination.
Okay, we'll saw, what's covered, just streamline, what's covered in the due care plan?
So the easiest way to say is that a due care plan fully explains the present environmental concerns. And explains how they will be addressed moving forward on the property, um I believe we. I don't know if we have one for this property just across the river here, but uh some of the, some of the documents we have from. It was the M D Q at the time filed the um. That we filed our plan with, it goes into describe uh in any particular due care plan. What scientifically the contaminant is and and why it's present and what mitigations are are present at the site. Um to help you meet those thresholds, so when we talk about a phase two has showed contamination on a site. What we're really saying in a condensed version there is that several of the soil borings in that phase two had. V O Cs, volatileized uh organic compounds that were in excess of parts per million. Above what the state has laid out as a threshold. So we condensed that down to contamination, so based on what those organic compounds are. How many of them there are, what they're in, you build your due care plan off of that. And that is as absolutely as technical on that as I'd be comfortable getting into.
Okay, um, thank you, now, this, this due care plan. Under the the brownfield boot camp, so you got a developer, um you're in the boot camp. You. Do you apply for funding to help with the due care plan? Is that what the boot camp suggests or?
No, so the the grant program is to help remediate and to address the actual brownfield site, it has nothing, it does. It's not to. it's not to pay for the do-care plan, it's actually to help remediate the brownfield site or address the issues at the brownfield site.
Only in theory, though?
No.
No.
Okay, in practice, but they're not coming to help. There's, like, okay. We have remediation that needs to take place.
Yep.
We're in the boot camp. How does that transition to fixing this property?
So this boot camp was just a, a series of trainings or informational sessions to help prepare you to, uh, write a grant application to secure funding to help remediate, remediate a brownfield site.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, was that done in the case of this West Ward project?
I think based on where we, where we didn't get with the West Ward project in terms of purchase agreement, uh, or, or development agreement, I, I don't think we took any kind of action towards formulating a, a do-care plan or taking much, uh, down in terms of getting the brownfield plan written out. Like, uh, I think that these were conversations that were started, but due just to where we, we had to stop with the development agreement. All of those details get figured out further by figuring out what the developer wants to put there.
Okay, now was that being held up because I'm being asked to purchase this property that I know is contaminated?
Is that the reason it's being held up?
May- maybe I'm not understanding your question.
Okay, I'm a developer, I wanna buy this property.
Yeah.
I know it's contaminated. Um, the purchase agreement is me actually purchasing the property or me just putting the option on the property through the city?
Well, I think maybe.
That would be hypothetical. In, in this particular instance, we had a draft of a development agreement that never went.
Okay, so.
Can it throw a termus maybe?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't see him.
No, you're fine. I'm behind you. Um, so my recollection was there were, there were two problems, at least, what was communicated to me that there were two problems. One, the developer di- did not wanna pay for the property. They wanted the property gifted to them, which we're not allowed to do under our ordinances. Um, number two, part of the language in the development agreement basically said that once they purchased the property, they assumed the liability for any and all environmental, um, issues associated with the property. Because it doesn't make sense for us to sell a property and still have the city be on the hook for environmental issues. They were not okay with that. Um, and so I think that's where things kind of came to an impasse. But, I mean, I would not be comfortable recommending to the city that you sell a piece of property and still be liable for environmental concerns on the property. That kinda beats the whole br- the whole problems.
And so this, the grant application through the brownfield boot camp came to a stop when I received notice from uh, Ms. Ammerman, since the developer was no longer interested that she, um, the work on the grant was would be, would stop. Um, like I said, we were assigned different roles and the EDC was taking the lead to actually prepare the grant application to apply for the funding, so, um, and that is where we're at.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Eve.
Alright, so next is our, in our September eighteenth council meeting, uh, just wanted to bring this before you because we will not have a study session on this date. This is the day that our city delegation will be here with us. Uh, there will be a reception and a dinner at Galati's, um, for the delegation. The reception is open to everyone. The dinner you, you would have to buy tickets to. Um, and then the intent is after the dinner, we will bring our delegation here to city council to, uh, recognize them, um, and then just, you know, be able to offer, you know, council appreciation to them. Or making this trip.
You got me, James.
We do have to, we have pins and we will be presenting them with two keys to the city. So just let me go, we will not have a study session on this date. We will.
Certificate.
Will they give us certificate? Have we worked on this?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Proclamation.
Mm-hmm. Um, so we will have regular council at seven P M. on this date.
Receptions at five?
Was that?
Receptions at five, I presume.
I think so.
Yep.
And then, like I said, we have to buy tickets for the dinner.
My ticket can be late for council meeting.
No. Cause the mayor will still be here at seven. So. Alright, item N, I know we moved item N or moved, uh, item from, uh.
This was supposed, I don't see it on.
It's on the, it's on the top line.
No, the, there's an invoice that.
I don't see, the agenda was amended or revised to include this, and I don't have.
Oh.
Right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Separate sheet. Colin?
So my, my suggestion would be you can, you can, I would, I, I would deal with agenda item N, and then after you get done with that, you can amend your agenda by a super majority and just add this as item O.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was republished and I know it's added, so.
Yeah, it just wasn't in.
Oh.
By the news.
Oh.
We gotta revise. Yeah.
And then we. That's top.
Oh.
Let's stick to what happened. If there's a revised agenda that goes up. So, I don't know when that revised.
Like.
Feeling all the truth.
Yeah, where is it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, again, the.
After we get, and we can.
So I would just err on this, this is just the attorney, I would err on the side of caution, just add it, because nobody's gonna, I don't think anybody's gonna argue over an invoice, but add it as an agenda item old, and then discuss it after you get some.
So listen to the attorney. The agenda item N, um, is the ask, and I don't even see a full application. Is the ask for the block party from Charles. The one with, so that I paid seventeen. Of your full agenda.
Yeah. Seventeen and eighteen.
So this, no, eighteen is.
On the back of it?
Yes, that's the.
This is the leisure hour.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, the seventeen is just a written request. Uh, to have a block party on August twenty-sixth. Um, we had wanted to move this for discussion before we approve. So, yeah, a couple of.
I'd like to ask the question.
This was a token, or you're on seventeen?
Yeah. This.
I'll go.
Oh, this, is this the same one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm looking.
Just, just for clarification, are you, is this discussion or just discussion?
Discussion slash approval.
Then you would need a motion and a second to enter discussion now.
So do I have a motion?
So mo-.
Support. Okay, there you go. Thanks, Colin.
Alright.
I'm so agree.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm looking at this where it says that it's on Broadway Street.
No. Third Street.
Okay, third street.
Yeah.
But I was, I was looking at this.
Yeah, look at this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Page seventeen. And it says, no children allowed.
Right, but during the daytime, I got hot dogs and hamburgers and bounce houses for the kids. So it will be kids in the daytime, like, early through the day.
I was just wondering, because I know there's a lot of children up in that area.
Right, that's why I was trying to do something for them in the daytime.
And to, to say, no children allowed. I was, we just wondered how we wanna do it so that children couldn't come around?
To be honest, there's no possible way to like avoid the children, like, from being outside, but like through the daytime, I got bounce houses and hot dogs and stuff for the kids, so it's like, uh, all-day event. I got vendors coming in, I got people selling food. Yeah. So, to me, the kids was welcome in the daytime, because it's barely anything up there for them to do anyway. So, but it will be a time period where the bounce houses come down and stuff like that for the kids, so.
Back to that, um.
But is this the same event?
There's a couple of different flyers. There's a couple of different flyers, yeah, that's T Lane's birthday, yeah.
Is it in conjunction with what you have?
Yes, me and him. He was just here, but he had to get his son from, um, football practice or something.
But this is stating Broadway Street.
Oh, well, that's a misprint. I own properties on Third Street, that's where I wanna have him been at. I own two lots on Third Street. So I can get that taken care of.
Thank you so much. So, um, you, you, uh, rose a concern about it just being something written. Um, if this is approved tonight, is he able to, um, fill out the paperwork and do what he needs to do, or are you concerned with, because you was?
Well, this is for this Saturday, right?
Yes.
So wouldn't be able to come back to us for approval.
So can we prove it today, I guess, is what I'm asking, or no?
That's what the motion is.
Okay.
I just have a question. The one flyer that the mayor has references bottle service, which to me says that there's gonna be alcohol served, and if there's gonna be alcohol served, has there been approval from, uh, Liquor Control Commission?
Alcohol served where?
Anywhere at the event.
I'm not serving alcohol.
Bottom girls.
This is, I don't know, girl.
Right, about, my, my understanding, for my days, party days, were bottom girls the girls that bring you bottles of alcohol?
Oh.
Unless there's another type of bottom girl, I don't know.
I don't have any clue what you're talking.
It's on that.
No bottles are being served, no drinks, no alcohol being served.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I'm still what you're saying too, but I'm trying to fill you in on what.
That's fine, if it's not gonna be.
You know, Travis, he probably put that on the fly, you know.
I think this.
I had a block party before over there. Everything was fine. I was asking, can I get a couple officers? I'm willing to pay them to be on the scene for everything that's going on. I had one a few years before, I had a couple officers fed them and we, I had no problems.
Yeah, I.
Yep.
I think what you're saying is what we want to hear. What is this sheet is entirely different. Yeah, so we may need to throw this away.
Throw it away.
I just really was turning what, what about.
About the kids, I understand that.
You provide it for them, so.
But, but I gotta understand that, you know, when these things come to us, we have to make sure that all the processes are being followed.
Yes.
Um, you know, you, you mentioned that children are gonna be there.
Eleven o'clock in the morning, in the daytime, I got househouses.
Exactly, but at what point are children gonna get removed? What, who's gonna, who's gonna make that thing? Who's gonna make sure that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I got security, uh, and I'm gonna make sure. Just like I did last time, I had spoke with Kip a few years ago and got the approval to have a block party, and it was fine. I had kids there in the morning, block bounce, bounce houses, uh, slush machines, all type of stuff, and after they took down, it was time to go.
Uh, yeah, I, I just think there's still a lot of
uncertainty.
Uncertainties in regards to safety, especially, you know, with the most recent, um, events, and it wasn't that long ago where there was a party that, and it, you know.
Yeah, I'm not responsible for that.
I know.
For that.
This is just something that we as a council.
Yes.
You know, we have the authority to make sure that things are being taken care of in the proper process. I don't think this is coming within the proper process, even though you, you may say that the you had nothing to do with us. Somebody else had something to do with it.
Yeah, he made the fly, I never said I had nothing to do with it. I just said, maybe the fire has you under the wrong impression.
Yeah, it, it, this is the concern.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry about the fire. Yes, about America, um, I believe the last, um, event that had taken place was an unsanctioned event. I don't believe that was one that we authorized.
Yeah, but also we can't have our police officers have the expectations of being there to monitor a party when, you know, as it is, we only, we know that there's only maybe two to three officers at any time.
No, I got you, but you also don't want your officers to mistakenly, um, stumble upon a party that's unsanctioned.
Sure.
And then they now have to maintain a crowd that they weren't expecting to be there. Um, this, the same street is where we authorized one. Uh, I think that was last year, maybe, it was last year, but, um, yeah, I think I don't know what I'm saying. Yeah, to that point. Yeah.
If I could ask Chief Kip to come up too, because we, um, discussed this as well. I recommend, council, if we're gonna continue to do this, we need to have a formal policy in place. We need to have a formal application that everyone fills out where there are certain requirements. Um, I think if we're gonna do this, maybe, I know it's eleven P M., but maybe limit all of our parks closed at dusk. Um, so do we wanna have streets actually closed at late into the night? If we're gonna allow something, maybe it just has to reopen sooner than the proposed time. But we are working to come up with, uh, formal policy to bring forward to council, um, because we have to keep in mind, if we're closing public streets and community block parties are supposed to be like a community event, um, something that's actually, um, for the entire community as a whole. So we are working to kind of bring forward like a formal policy, formal application um, for council's consideration.
And my concern for this too is normally we would have insurance requirements for events like this, um, is assurance, insurance involved? Um, you have vendors, so you need to have permits from the city for vendors. You have food carts, you need to have permits from the city for food carts now. All those have changed in the last year or so. Um, so anybody that's selling anything or if there's food being sold, all have to have permits from the city before they do that.
So I think if we wanna move before the policy's in place, we can, um, maybe change the proposed times if we open up the streets sooner than what is proposed, just to allow you to move forward with your, with the event, um, but.
And, and my recommendation to speech on this too, is we have eighteen parks in the city that people can run out and use for these events, closing city streets down, um, that affect residents, I don't think is probably the best way to do this.
Well.
A lot of places can be done other than on a street.
Right, right, of course, but, uh, I don't think anybody used Third Street. I'm over there every day, all day. Mowing my properties, you know, I only, I can use my property if it's necessary. No, but in the future, I will understand what need to be. I didn't even know it was like, uh, the last time I just came.
Yeah, I know.
I just came and asked you, man.
Yeah.
I mean, I was gonna say, I wouldn't be opposed to like closing the third street if we did like from one P M. to eight or nine P M., you know what I mean?
Yes.
Um.
I was gonna say ten.
Yeah.
And the more like. But even going in hours after dusk, like nine P M.
Just so council, where I mean, currently where we are in August, uh, dawn to dusk is six fifty-two in the morning to eight thirty at night.
How is it?
Sheesh.
Yeah, so it's like nine, even an hour party nine and.
What's wrong with eleven to nine?
Would, would you? Well, this, we're saying eleven to nine.
Mayor pretend Jackson.
Um.
From eleven till eleven.
Charles. Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Alright, so twelve-ten and twelve-fourteen, who's that belong to?
Me.
So is that lawn there?
Yes.
Grass, so you, you can put this on the grass instead of having. Okay.
I just want a three-block for.
And that might be so, so you already, you already know me, you already know me, so, um, you already know me, so. Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate you. Um, so the concern is the children, because in the other event, that was not your event, there was a problem, and we did have a problem with children as well.
Yes.
So as we're going forth, we are trying to protect our community. Alright, so. Alright, so we we saw we have to hold you. I'm quite, okay, but um I am in agreement with um. With Haley, because that was one of my agendas, is that we get on the ball with this not this type of stuff not happening. And for it to be um. Put into application like it's supposed to be and not something that's going to be this this timeframe. Because it is past dark, you know, dusk, you know, we used to say things happen at twelve P M, right? They don't, they happen at ten and eleven, so I'm saying and agreeing that something from eleven A M to eight thirty, which is dusk. Because if we're asking you to go into a park, that's what time you would have to be out of a park. So that's kind of where I'm, that's where I'm leaning to, that's what I can say yes to, but I can't say yes to anything else, I'm just going to keep it real with you. So if he was to do it from the time that you would. Would be having you in a park, just like it was when um Barry had wherever he had at the splash pad. He had to be out of it at the same time, so that's still giving you the same thing that we gave him, but. Going forward on your grounds is your grant.
Yeah.
But we can't continue to keep blocking stuff off and blocking the street off and going forward with it, because it's too much. We want our kids to stay alive, we know a few of them were saved. Were saved due to a different incident, we know the ones that got shot at, we shot at or whatever, we don't know the names of them from the net last thing that happened. We just don't want it to keep going, so that's just where my heart is at, so I'm just letting you know that. Okay, thank you so much.
I don't want nobody to get shot either.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep it real with you, I know what you know, you already know what it comes.
So are we in agreement with Mayor Pro Tem Jackson, are you good with the?
Eleven A M to eight thirty. Dust.
Nine o'clock.
Dust, what are you saying, Chief, it's nine o'clock. Dust is eight thirty, correct? Okay, eight thirty, because by the time you guys get out of there, it's gonna be nine o'clock. And get things cleared up, okay, so you gotta be out of there, nine o'clock, nine oh one, no. They got to go. Y'all got to go. But do not have them in the street.
I think the time limit once. At eight thirty, we would just reopen the street, but you can continue to have your event on your. You have to stop your event at that time, but we have to reopen the street.
Yes, the street had to be reopened. Yeah, yes.
To have officers patrolling the area, because I like to keep everybody safe.
I understand that would be up to Chief Kip and who you have. That's part of. But also keep in mind, like Chief Kip was saying, if you're having vendors, if you're having good truck, they have to go. Through the proper process.
Okay.
Okay. So the motion is eleven A M to eight thirty P M.
Correct. They have to be off the street at nine o'clock.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Brent.
Yep.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed, yes. Jackson, yes. Waller.
Yes. Thank you all for being here.
Appreciate it.
Be safe and enjoy.
And the next time, hopefully, we will have that on, so.
Do I have a motion? To add the invoice for Kennedy Industries as one item O. Support.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. Lady Manager, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, so the quote before you is to prepare the um Rieger Park Lift Station. Um, one of the pumps needs to be repaired, so we have received a quote from Kennedy Industries. Um, for the amount of nine thousand four ninety-five, so this will come out of the water fund and we are recommending approval, because I know. Um, Mister Hustin would like to get that repaired done.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed. Back them, yes. Waller.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Brent.
Yep.
And Mayor.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, go ahead.
Yes, so one would be the ordinance about the black party. Uh, the next would be, I'd like to have um Kip come back and give us some information about surveillance cameras.
The what?
Surveillance cameras, you know where, I'm not gonna say it again, I'll lie. He knows where. He knows where. So. You guys do too. Yes, he is, he's laughing.
Any other agenda items?
I think that was it.
Alright. Public comments. But at this time, if there's anybody in the gallery that ever like to stand in the dress council, you may do so, just give us your name and address. And Shereen Minnich is yours.
Hi, uh, my name is Fred Roesti. Spelled R O E S T I. I live at nine twelve in North Ethan. And I am a sometime attorney. And sometime parliamentarian. I was interested in a newspaper article. And I want to make these comments. Majority rule, minority rights. Keep that in mind, no problem. If the minority wants a. Minority want a closed session. They got it right, have it, it's not gonna change the vote. It's gonna allow people to talk better with each other. And I think that's really important. And also. We want to protect the integrity of the institution. Anybody says. They then complain about something being rare within. And already said, we think we should have a private. Closed session. Now, I'll yield to the attorney on how he. As you're a parliamentarian, how he would proceed, but my recommendation would be at any time. Minority rights want to have a closed session. Especially on sensitive issues, you'd have it. The jury rule, always. But minority right, thank you.
You need a ride home later.
Yeah.
Anybody else like to stand in the next. Thanks, City Managers report. Thank you, Mayor, just a few updates, I'll keep it brief, a copy was included in the pack and then I did email you and update a copy. Um, so we will have a presentation from the citizens to beautify Alvin at our um September eighteenth meeting. They're looking to do a beautification project at the dead end of Jackson Street in Gold Star Park. Um, myself and Director O'Brien and Councilmember Davis now with them, I think it would really enhance that corridor as that is one of the priorities council has set to improve the. Um corridors into the city, so I'm happy that they are willing to do that. Um, so we did, um Eagle recently released the priority scoring for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four drinking waters state revolving fund projects. Um, so we received an initial score of seventy out of a hundred. Um, additional information was submitted to Eagle and we gained an additional fifteen points for a total of eighty-five. Which puts us in a good position to be um funded. So the Eagle is preparing a draft intended use plan, which will be released in September or October. Um, if awarded, we're looking at a possible funding option of seventy-five twenty-five, like grant loan split or fifty fifty grant loan split. Usually the higher operated every projects will receive the seventy-five grant with twenty-five loan option. But I still think a fifty fifty split um. It is a good offer, um we our application was for an estimated total project cost of nineteen point two million dollars, so that is all. Water improvement projects, so that's the second water tower, a lot of lead line replacement and improvements to our water treatment plant, so I will keep you posted on that. Um, I think that's uh good news for the community. Um, public safety, what received under war for the self. Pain breathing apparatus. Um, grant through FEMA's assistance to firefighters grant for a hundred sixty-five thousand nine fifty-four, so it does have a required. Match, local match of sixteen thousand five ninety-five, so we'll bring that formal request to council during the September fifth meeting. And I just want to applaud Chief Kip, um so we're working to update our capital improvements plan and. When looking at that, we have been able to. Secure funding for all of the capital improvements. Purchases for public safety, so that is a a huge accomplishment and I just want to say thank you to Chief Kip for your leadership.
Great job.
Appreciate you, um the countywide transportation authority, so I received notice from our county administrator controller. Town County, they're resuming the consideration of the formation of a countywide public traded authority. So the county administrator controller will recommend to the county commissioners on September seventh. Move forward to adopt the Articles of Incorporation. Um, that's what formally established the Transportation Authority of Calhoun County or T A P, so this um. The Articles of Incorporation would include the entire county, um so it's one step closer to kind of getting countywide transportation. Um, a political subdivision, um you can adopt a resolution to opt out of participating in that. That authority, however, by doing so, are your community will not be serviced by that transportation. Um, service, so I know we've had discussions on this previously, previously, I know. Transportation is a barrier or an issue here in our community, so I would recommend that we. Um, support this and not opt out, we have until um October ninth to adopt. Resolution, however, council feels that this is not in the best interest of our community, but I think. It would do all our residents good to participate in this countywide initiative. Um, so a new drop box will be coming to City Hall, so Public Act eighty-five of twenty twenty-one requires that all jurisdictions have one state funded drop box. For every fifteen thousand registered voters. And beginning January one of twenty twenty-six, all drop boxes must be video monitored. So our company was able to secure grant funding to purchase the drop box as well as. Security camera to make sure that we are in compliance with that, so we will be getting that installed here in the very. Um, near future. And it's hard to believe that the summer, we have just about two weeks left of summer, so Tuesday, September fifth, City Hall will. Resume our normal hours of operation Monday through Friday from eight A M to five P M. And that's all I have.
Any questions for City Managers? Alright. Uh, Councilmember Cummins.
Thank you so much, I just wanted to um really just let Haley know that you're doing really good. You are really doing really good.
Thank you.
One bit of good news and Councilwoman Lawler and Councilwoman Williams may have to catch Councilwoman Reed, because she may faint. Um. Some of you know that three oh seven West Chestnut has been an ongoing. Problem for the city of Albion in that, um there's been. We've had some orders there, we've had the. The property's been condemned and and things like that, we went through litigation. To have it declared a public nuisance and it's been a long time, um and we finally got an order for demolition and during tonight's meeting. I got confirmation that the current owner of the property has submitted. Fifteen thousand dollars of a thirty thousand dollar total demolition fee to secure. The demolition of that property, so that would be happening very recently.
I'm gonna get up and do my whole year there.
No more brown holes.
No more brown. Your family can't come out and have videos no more.
Any other Councilmember comments?
Oh, is this the same as future agenda items or? Comments or something, we missed that chance, you know, this is okay, I I just thought about it, so I'm late coming. But I would like to hear eventually, it may be comments, but you know, the great job that our um. Uh. Public safety is doing, but I think something may be done, you know, regarding public safety. Uh, in terms of. Us uh si- sirens or something like that in terms of protocol. You know, has anything like that been done for protocol for safety of the community? I know we used to have sirens and maybe we still have the sirens every, every um. No, 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 not. No. Safety of the community.
You just did one like a. Couple weeks ago, didn't you?
That was a college.
Maybe a article in the paper, you know, in terms of what do you do? Uh, if there's a tornado or some kind of guidelines, because. Uh, of course, all of us have been listening to what is happening in Hawaii. And so, I mean, we don't have that, but in terms of just general safety. That we as citizens can engage in if there's a catastrophe.
Well, there are. Nixel alerts, correct? That are very geographic specific. That anybody can sign up with on their cell phone. I know that the Amber alerts are.
Right.
Nixel.
Yeah.
Nixel will be very specific to the.
But I think that would be a good article. In terms of save, how how can we remain safe in our homes as well as in the community?
Just, just to add to that, didn't we have a conversation about this, um we have a plan?
We have, we did have a.
Yeah, we got we got the plans, we discussed them. Um, maybe we put the plans on the website? Or see if we can put.
Whatever we have. Uh, because it may not be known that man may be there, who knows about?
Yes, yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
Any other Councilmember comments? Alright, you have a motion to. Meeting adjourned eight forty-eight P M.